Close session.
I'll second it.
All right, more call votes. Carl?
Yes.
Louis?
Yes.
Boris?
Yes.
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 It's a certificate. Certification, close session. Pursuant to subsection 2.2-3712, D of the Code of Virginia, 1950, as amended, each member of the Board of Supervisors upon roll call certifies that to best of their knowledge only public business matters lawfully exempted from the open meeting requirements under the Virginia Freedom of Information Act and only such public business matters were identified in the motions by which the closed meeting was convened or heard, discussed, or considered in the meeting by the Board of Supervisors. Any member of the Board of Supervisors who believes that there was a departure from the requirements shall state so prior to the vote indicating the substance of the departure that in his or her judgment has taken place. Are there any supervisors who believe a departure has taken place? Since there is none, if you agree that the matters heard, discussed, or considered during the closed meeting were pursuant only to the motions by which the closed meeting was convened, please signify by saying yea or yes. Tim Lovelace?
Yes.
Luann Wallace?
Yes.
Carl Ray?
Yes.
Steve Breeding?
Yes.
David Eaton?
Yes.
Boris Christian?
Yes.
Rebecca Dye?
Yes.
Ma'am, your approval of term reg, approval session.
First thing we have tonight is our investigation of staying to that and understanding questions. Your loving Heavenly Father, thank you for giving us another day. We come before you in this hour. We ask for your guidance. We ask for you to help lead us to make the best decisions for the people of our county. We ask that you lead us, give us comfort, and let us know that we are doing your will. Thank you and Jesus knows all these.
For the allegiance to your love of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, and ever life and ever death.
All right, now we need to make some amendments to our agenda.
Chairman, make motion, we amend the agenda. If you agree with this.
All right. Do we have a second to this?
Second.
Thank you, all right. The first is under legal, under our county attorney. We have a number three, a resolution for Mr. Ben Chafin, our Senator. We have number four is a direction with the EMS director. Under county administrator, ten EMS, the job description changes. And number eleven is the salary imposition of the assistant stretch arm. So all those in favor of adding these two out are ten.
And Madam Chairman, I think everybody's present in this room. I told you to do a roll call vote earlier, assuming there may be some people out in the hall, but since everybody's here in here and can see how, see the vote, I don't think you had to do a roll call vote. If there were more people that do show up, we would have to switch back to that, but for time's sake, I think you can vote normally.
Okay. All right, all those for adding those with changes to our agenda. Anyone opposed? All right. All right, the first thing we have tonight is the First Amendment Sanctuary Resolution. Do you have any comments on that?
Madam Chair, I assume that we've all had time to look at this. And the only thing I saw on it, we need to change the date of the signature to today's date. But I will make a motion that the Board approves this resolution.
All right, do we have a second?
I'll second.
All right. Any further discussion? Do we need to do a roll call vote or just a roll call? All right.
However, I mean, you can vote normal, just because everybody's in this room, so everyone can see, so however you want to do that.
Okay. All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. All those opposed?
No.
No. Anyone abstaining?
Abstained.
All right.
What was the vote?
All right, what is the? Al Farah? Stephen David? Opposed. Rebecca, Lou, Boris, Tim, and abstained. All right. All right. Thank you. All right, the next thing on our agenda is the approval of our minutes from our January Court, Board meeting. Do I have a motion to approve both things?
So move.
Tim, do we have a second?
Second.
Lou? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right. Three, the approval of our expenditures. Do we have a motion to accept those expenditures as listed?
I'll make a motion to accept those.
All right, thank you, Boris. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right. All those in favor of paying the bills?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right. The next thing on our agenda, oh, Pam, do you have the tree?
Also, if the board members felt bad since we're videoing this live, I need you to huck into the mics so we can hear you out there, but I got no mic.
I keep getting a red light on mine. Thank you. I'm still good?
Yeah.
All right, the first person we have is Carly Glass. State your name and your address, please. And the subject for discussion.
Thank you. Okay, I'm Carly Glass, 428 Claremont Circle, Castlewood. State the business, just Madam Chair, Board. I want you to know I'm coming to you out of love tonight. It's a love that runs really deep for this county. I've had opportunity after opportunity to leave this county, but I love it. If you look at our nation, you can easily see division and more energy spent working against each other than progress in our nation. And unfortunately, I feel the same about this Board. There are alliances and there's a divide that is so apparent and it's so disappointing. You're better than this. We need you to be better than this. Russell County deserves better than this. I often teach leadership forums, and one of my favorite books is The Ideal Team Player. I consider this group a team. The three characteristics to make someone an ideal team player, according to that book, is being hungry, humble, and people smart. Some of you are feeling a seat and need to have a hunger and a passion for advancing this county. Some of you are super hungry, but you lack humility and you come across as absolutely demeaning and not representative of the great people of this county. Some of you lack people smarts and you're being manipulated and don't even see it. I implore this Board to start with yourselves. Examine yourselves. I sent a link to Lonzo of a self-assessment you can take. I've got copies printed out here if you want one. Start with yourself. Figure out how to work on a plan that advances the county as a whole. I am cheering for the upper end of this county to be successful. I'm cheering for the lower end of this county to be successful, and I'm cheering for everything in between. I'm cheering for this Board to be successful. I don't want you to fail. You're our leaders. We aren't each other's competition. The upper end don't compete with the lower end. We're each other's advocates. Don't wait until the next election so that you can have somebody that you can work with. Don't hope for that. Don't be a publican that can only love and work with those that are like them. Be better. Figure out how to work together. End this divide, end these alliances that are running rampant in this Board. I can tell you how people are going to vote before you even vote. That's sad. It is sad. United, we will stand, but divided, this county will surely fall. You are the leaders. You get to decide which we do. That's all.
Our next person is Sean Vance.
Sean Vance, I live in Oninamalos Springs. This is a little bit different subject. After our last meeting, can't hear me? After last meeting, I had talked to Jess Powers out here in the parking lot. I do believe Diesel in the emergency management team, and he said that he was having problems getting his job done efficiently due to the vice, Boris and Ray being overseeing him. Now, I wish he was here tonight because I ain't trying to throw him under the bus, but makes me concerned that our money's not being handled correctly. He says he has the certifications, he has the knowledge, and he's being led by people who do not. And if that's the way it is, then there's a problem with that. Now, and he also made a statement to me about how he was owed money for overtime that the county has already gotten, and he has not been paid for. Now, that's his words, not mine. But anyway you look at it, I find there's a problem when somebody who's working for this county standing in the parking lot telling me for 20 minutes, and Jerry Connor, he was there with me, that he has problems with the people who oversee him and that affects his job and his capability of doing his job right. So if that's the case, then we need to figure out why employee of Russell County is complaining about you all. That's what I got to say. And what she said, I'm all for that, everybody.
Theo McCracken? Give your address. Come in, sorry. Ms. McCracken? All right, we'll move on to the next one. Larry Hughes, state your name and your concern, please.
My name's Larry Hughes. I live at 30 Glade Hall Drive in Lebanon, Virginia, Russell County. My concern is just wanting to address the First Amendment ordinance, but it's kind of a moot point now. Since you voted on it before we had a chance to mention it, it doesn't get any good to talk about it. Just like this young lady stood here, I am disappointed. Last meeting, I was upset. I'm not upset now, I'm just disappointed and disgusted. I'd like to know, I know you don't have to answer me, but I'd like to know what's your reason, why you don't want to support the First Amendment, why you don't want to support the people that has a right to voice your opinions? That's what the First Amendment's about, freedom of speech, freedom of press, freedom of religion. And yet, we got four of you who, you know, vote no, one's abstaining, and two's for. That's very confusing. As a citizen, as a loving citizen of this county, my entire life except for four years when I was moved away, I've been here, I'm seven years old, I've been here for 66 years. And as this young lady said, I'm disappointed, I am disgusted. I can't believe this county has drifted so far apart that you cannot support. The people say, you know, I know the resolution maybe has no teeth to it at all. It doesn't have, but so what? You would tell the county, we got your back. You elected us, we will protect you to the best of our ability, even though it may be king. But would make us feel better that you did, but you will sit here and vote no? And last time you said that's what your citizens told you. I don't think that's the case. I really don't think that's the case. I don't know why you voted no. I guess my three minutes about up. I want to tell you, just be shaven yourself. This young lady said, take an evaluation, see where you stand, see if you are representing your people. I don't think you are. Thank you.
Next, we have Mr. Trump, please.
Good evening, guys. Thank you. Appreciate each and every one of you, I really do. I think you all did a great job. I'm here tonight to speak about the resolution. There's different aspect. I agree with these guys to one aspect, but we're all sitting here, our First Amendment rights are being heard as we speak. That's what it's all about. I've been in healthcare, I've experienced the COVID firsthand, and we've just spent thousands of dollars and carried that money to get prepared, to buy the Harper PPE, the things we needed, and as far as this goes, it's right, you don't have to keep. And so what's the point of that, you know, to loosen restrictions, make a few feel like they have a looser restriction? My mother was deathly ill at the 1st of December, about lost her. They called 19 hospitals in five different states, and she couldn't get an ICU bed anywhere because there were so many COVID patients. Someone had to die to get her bed, and now she has bone cancer. And if I carried COVID home to her, I could kill her, you know? We're just now on the cusp of getting our vaccines. This, we're almost there. We just need a little more push, a little more time, and we can get through this. And as far as small businesses, I have one. I know the suffering that goes on and that, but also my employees are standing there with people coming in without masks. They're scared too. So it's time that we just push through this and get through it together. And I really appreciate each and every one of you. Each and every one of you have helped, and I'm coming as a citizen today. But I just want you to know that there are people out there, elderly, that need ours to be together and need us not to carry COVID in our home too long. Thanks.
All right, next person is Kelly. Dale?
I was going to say that I live in a desk at 248 West Main Street. I gave each and every Board member a copy of our quarterly report, a little picture of our new hands-free locker, so people can, I mean, this is going to be helpful throughout for people. We live in a 24/7 world. If you're working a schedule and the library is not meeting your need, you can pick something up from the locker at your convenience, 24/7. You can read the report and see, but I also gave everyone a copy of a flyer, and I'm dismayed that I didn't bring quite enough to at least hold one up to you guys. The library has a traveling exhibit. It's just basically banners with information, but we're going to have two programs associated with it, and the room is big enough that if you want to come look at it, you can be six feet from somebody. And the name of it is Teetotalers and Moonshiners: Prophibition in Virginia. So it's really fascinating, and one of the programs, they're both going to be virtual, is stories from the moonshine trade here in southwest Virginia from Kathy Shearer, and the other one is going to be music from that era. And there's actually a little bit of music available. If you come in, there's an iPad on the stand, so it's a little interactive. And I hope you will take a look at that. We will also be doing a sort of virtual tour of me or somebody else walking through the exhibit, so even if you can't make it, you can kind of catch it from the set. Thank you.
All right, is there anyone else? This is all that's on this current list. Does anyone else want to speak?
Group back on the guest aisle. My name is William Ralph Keane. I moved to this county five years ago. I live at 64 Ratcliffe, Langley City, Love, Virginia. I lived in northern Virginia, I was born, raised here in Richland, moved northern Virginia in 1963. I recently moved back to this area. I'm very, for the six years I've been here, the county supervisors, I've never met any of you. I've worked with a bunch in Parvacs County. But the mail situation here in this county is atrocious. I've talked to Ms. Di in regards to the water. My water, a young gentleman came to cut my water off the 6th day of January. I asked him why. He said I hadn't paid him the bill. I sent, I showed him the check, I sent the check in on the 20th day of December. 6th day of January, they came to cut my water off. Why? The check, I called the bank, the bank said that it not went through. My wife called on the 7th day, they had not received it. The 8th day, they had not received it. They call, they charged me a $30 late fee. I got my bill this month, they charged me a $35 reconnection fee. Why? You didn't disconnect it. The young lady told me, she said that they issued a work order, that's why. I've talked to Ms. Di about it. They don't want to give a credit to it. I've talked to Morgan Griffith's office. I know a couple of congressmen, senators, northern Virginia, I live beside of, they said it's atrocious. You need to get a handle on it. That's all I'm going to address. Is it because I'm new here in this area? My relatives started in this area. They originally owned the Land Stewart Cowal Company before they bought it. I have a first cousin, is attorney, is one of the VAs here, and I think y'all need to look into this situation and address it. Thank you.
Anyone else? Any other comments? All right, saying no, we'll close citizen comment period. Constitutional officers. Saying no, all right. We'll move on to the county attorney reports and requests.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And the first thing that I have with the Board's approval tonight is the interim agreement regarding the courthouse. What this agreement does is memorializes our agreement with J.A. Street and also the architect continuum, the conceptual phase of developing the courthouse design. I have reviewed this document, and so has Curtis, the project consultant on this, and we've made a couple of changes, and we are good with the agreement in its final form and are asking for the Board's approval tonight.
At this time, we will take a motion to accept this interim agreement.
Chairman, make a motion, we approve this group.
Thank you, Steve.
Second.
Second. Lou? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The next item I have is an agreement with the Board of Supervisors and the Russell County PSA that was being required by Rural Development. As a part of the consolidation, the debt was restructured, and because of that restructuring, Rural Development does not accept moral obligations that the county usually does regarding the bonds, and so they require a separate agreement that basically says that the Board will continue to do what the Board has been doing in the past and appropriate the amount of debt, the debt payment to the PSA each year, with the exception of the three years that they're going to be different. And this agreement has been approved by Rural Development and has been approved by PSA, and I'm asking for the Board of Supervisors to approve that agreement tonight.
So move.
Thank you, David. Do we have a second?
Second.
Steve, thank you. Need further discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
The next matter I have for the Board's consideration, Madam Chair, I bring to the Board with a very heavy heart. It's a resolution celebrating the life of Ben Chafin. I drafted this resolution, I started with the resolution that the General Assembly passed in his honor and put a few more details about his service to Russell County. And I can say unequivocally that of all the jobs Ben had, he really enjoyed being legal counsel for the agencies of Russell County and being part of the progress over the years of Russell County. Celebrating the life of the Honorable Augustus Benton Chafin Jr., whereas the Honorable Augustus Benton Chafin Jr., a passionate advocate for southwest Virginia, an accomplished attorney and state legislator who earned bipartisan admiration for his commitment to the betterment of the Commonwealth as a whole, passed away on January 1st, 2021. And whereas a proud native of Russell County, Augustus Benton Ben Chafin Jr. grew up on his family's farm and learned the value of hard work and responsibility at a young age. He worked at a local meatpacking plant as a teenager, and he returned home most weekends while attending college to help on the farm. And whereas a first-generation college student in his family, Ben Chafin received a bachelor's degree from East Tennessee State University and a law degree from the University of Richmond. And whereas Ben Chafin established what is now Chafin Law Firm PC in the 1980s and practiced law throughout southwest Virginia for more than 30 years, in addition to his work as an attorney, he served on the Board of the First Banking Trust Company and held close to his roots in agriculture as the owner and operator of a beef cattle farm. And whereas Ben Chafin began his public service to the citizens of Russell County in 1988, when he began representing the Russell County Department of Social Services and represented the agency for almost 30 years. And whereas Ben Chafin continued his public service to Russell County as legal counsel for the Industrial Development Authority of Russell County, Virginia, beginning in 1992 for 28 years, the Russell County School Board beginning in 2003 for 17 years, and the Russell County Public Service Authority beginning in 2008 for 12 years, and the Board of Supervisors, Russell County, Virginia, beginning in 2018. And whereas Ben Chafin, through his representation in these Russell County agencies, helped to elevate and provide invaluable services to the citizens of Russell County. And whereas desire is to be of further service to his community and the Commonwealth Ben Chafin ran for and was elected to the House of Delegates in 2013, becoming the first Republican to represent the 4th District in more than 20 years. And whereas Ben Chafin was subsequently elected to the Senate of Virginia during a special election in 2014, and ably served the residents of southwest Virginia in the 38th District until the time of his passing. Whereas Ben Chafin was a staunch proponent of public education, responsible economic growth, Second Amendment rights, and access to healthcare for all Virginians. And whereas Ben Chafin consistently supported job creation in his district, helping to establish the Invest Southwest Virginia partnership to promote the coalfields as a region, as a future site of renewable energy infrastructure and high-technology business development. And whereas Ben Chafin served the residents of Russell County, Virginia, and the entire Commonwealth with the utmost dedication, integrity, and distinction. And whereas outside of his careers, Ben Chafin was an avid outdoorsman who relished every opportunity to appreciate southwest Virginia's natural splendor. He volunteered his time in leadership as former president of the Russell County Rotary Club and enjoyed fellowship and worship with the congregation of Gracewood Community Church in Lebanon. And whereas Ben Chafin will be fondly remembered and greatly missed by his wife of 38 years, Laura, his children, Sophia, Audra, Augustus III, and their families, and numerous other family members, friends, and colleagues. Now, therefore be it resolved by the Board of Supervisors of Russell County, Virginia, hereby note with great sadness the loss of the Honorable Augustus Benton Chafin Jr., a respected statesman, attorney, and champion for Russell County, and be it resolved further that the clerk of the Board of Supervisors of Russell County, Virginia, prepare a copy of this resolution for presentation to the family of Augustus Benton Chafin Jr. as an expression of the Board's respect for his memory.
Then, we need a motion to accept this, please.
I'll make that motion, I'll see.
David? And Steve? Thank you all. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Madam Chair, if it's okay at this time, I'd like to kind of expand, Katie knows a little bit about this, but I was in conversation with some of the family and Judge Moore, and they have, they want to let, you know, and we really are going to miss Ben. I mean, Ben was a Russell County citizen and also represented southwest Virginia well. And it's just such a shocker and such a great loss to all of us. Judge Moore has asked me to let the public know that they are working on something with the family's respect and taking the time that the family needs to maybe do a possible portrait or something to identify the life of Ben, and like we did for his sister there when we did that portrait and placed it in the courthouse. So I've kind of just, and I think with the Board's permission, leave it up to Judge Moore and the family, and then they can present back to us upon our verification to do that, if that's fine with you all. I told them I would present it tonight and let them know that I'm sure we'll have complete consensus and everybody will be in complete support, but I just want to let everybody know.
Thank you, Board members. I sincerely appreciate. And the last item that I have for the Board's consideration is, due to all of the issues with COVID and just reevaluating our emergency management services department and how we can make it better, I have researched the issue and by the code... I have researched the issue, and by the code, either board members or the county administrator can be the director of emergency management services, which sort of oversees emergency management services in our county. I've spoken with the chief operating officer over our region, which makes up about 19 counties, and discussed the issue with him and gotten some feedback there. And I think my recommendation to the board moving forward to help provide some continuity, given that the county administrator in his office has been a large part of the response to the pandemic, that it would be most beneficial to the county to replace the board members as the director of emergency management services. And pursuant to the code, designate the county administrator as the director of emergency management services. I know in our region, we are the minority that still follow that. And I think, again, it will help provide continuity and a more cohesive response. And I think it will be very beneficial to the county in many ways in the operations of that part of the county.
Do you need a motion to?
Madam Chair, I would like to make a motion to make the county administrator the Russell County Emergency Services Director and to place the emergency services coordinator under the direct supervision of the county administrator. And to eliminate the two board supervisor positions as emergency services director and assistant emergency services director. This will result in an overall savings of $2,700. And in years, it would be a savings of $27,000 in any mileage and expenses that might be charged to those services.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
No.
No.
All right, thank you. Next are the county administrators' reports and requests.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First on the county administrator reports and requests, of course, is the Virginia Telecommunication Initiative, the VITA grant. As some of y'all have seen in the paper, this is funding that from the Department of Housing and Community Development that was in the paper concerning, it's $16 million that was given to the Cumberland Plateau Planning District to work with Point Broadband on expanding our internet within our region, which we greatly need. And of course, the pandemic showed just how weak, you know, how weak our system was and how much we need within the, in these areas, not just to serve the kids, but serve the households. And a lot of the jobs that have transitioned to either a house or either a home. This will give the flexibility to, you know, with the county residents and children, to be able to outreach this grant. And of course, we have board members that sit on the Cumberland Plateau Planning District on this. And this is sharp between the, of course, Russell County, Buchanan County, Tazza County, and Dickinson County. But talking to them, you know, they're working on theirs too, so this will fill the gaps in addition to all the other grants that are in place. But as far as the layout, will we, the board have we given that information out later? We're trying to fill out what is not being done and get it to the areas as fast as can with Point Broadband. And the board members will be glad to report back to the citizens as soon as they get a plan in place. Of course, this is the announcement of government northroom for the 29.6 that was given, as you can see in the state. And as well as y'all can see, Cumberland Plateau ended up with 16 of the 29 million dollars. So that, again, that's advocacy from the board supervisors. These committees, the Cumberland Plateau, are setting in and advocating between the other districts for this initiative. So of course, this is going to collect, this will be connecting more than 11,700 households. This is what the estimate is, and businesses and institutions serve broadband services leveraging over $34 million. You get a member, this is also a private-public investment. So what the Virginia puts into the pot, into the initiative grant, is also matched by the provider. So it's a total of $34 million went into the region in addition to the other grants that are in place.
I'd like to make a comment on that.
Yes, sir, absolutely.
That, the money that was awarded is only a portion, like you said, of the total commitment that I guess Point Broadband now has taken over. I think the total project, including all the CAF II areas, was close to 40 some million, 45 million dollars. So they were committed, they received federal funding to do the CAF II areas. Cumberland Plateau Planning District Company committed a million dollars out of their revenues to add on to that, plus the money that was received in the VITA grant. But that's not to say that everybody is going to be hooked up. That's only areas that they agreed to look at, which is a vast majority of all four counties in Russell County. I asked Joseph Puckett in particular when we could expect to have all his work done in Russell County, and he told me by the end of 2022, if this grant was awarded. But there will be additional money coming down. And I know Lou and I have a meeting with Puckett on the 18th to look at those areas that are not going to be covered under this big funding item. And I think it's our job now to find funding out of this additional COVID money that's going to be coming down to fill in these small areas that they think it's not economically feasible for them to get into. So we need to be doing that, and that's what we need to be working on. The big deal on the 18th is to have them define the areas that they're going to serve with this big funding package they have. And then we can look and try to fill in the gaps to some of these last mileage areas. So that's kind of where we are right now on this.
Thank you, Ms. Breeding. And the point is, and that was one of the big comments that we got from the public during this pandemic, you know, internet for the children, and I want Tim to tell you that. I think we went hot on buildings, anything that we own. We have got routers and we've got them live, we've got them hot on the schools. I've got them on the county buildings, libraries, anywhere that we can go live to give them access to. But, you know, as Mr. Breeding has pointed out, and Ms. Wallace is on the committee too. So they will be making, you know, that strategic plan to be able to fill these gaps. And, you know, we're working with the other counties in Cumberland Plateau. Next on the county administrator reports is the, of course, the VR Energy Conservation Revenue Bond. This is the Virginia SASE program. And I know that y'all have glasses to see this, so I don't need to criticize. This is what the board supervisors had done with our energy performance agreements with the schools to build them up, to get them energy proficient on natural gas, water windows, to get them under all the high schools, all the schools in some capacity or not. This was years ago, but the point on this grant and this project, it is reimbursed by the Fed, the Treasury at 75%. So of course, this year, the school will be getting back $144,917.26. This is a subsidized grant. We did the loan, we installed equipment, and it's subsidized by the federal government. The total credit remaining on the grant, as everyone can see, is $838,000 out of the total. And this project is well paying for itself. Not only are we getting the 75% subsidy from the Fed, we're also getting the energy performance savings from each one of the schools that we have reduced their energy app with our electricity, their water bills, and the installation. We have made these facilities more safer for the children and also doing a cost savings. Next on the county administrator reports is the, this is VDOT. This is a reporting of the inter-agency coordination meeting on the joint permit application. This is a requirement by Virginia Department of Transportation, anytime they do a project. It's in the board members' packet on Route 678, which is Mall Creek. This is the, this is work that's going to be done by state forces. This project will do repairs to bridge number 6248 located on Route 678 along Mall Creek in Russell County. These repairs will consist of reconstruction, the wingwales on the downstream side of the buildings. Existing wingwales have failed and will be removed from the channel. So again, it's on Mall Creek, 678, and we'll also keep the citizens informed when this work starts to begin. Next on the county administrator reports is the state and local economic interest financial statements. I want to thank the board and all of our committees and authorities for submitting their economic interests and financial disclosures requirement. And next on the county administrator reports is, let me get through this, VDOT. There we go. Thank you. Next on the county administrator reports is the Russell County Fiscal Year 2122 budget meeting schedules. Of course, we're in that time of the year again. The board supervisors over the past, this board setting especially, have been very conservative. Of course, you have not seen any real estate tax raises, or you've not seen any raises in personal property. Actually, the last tax increase that was 1999, which is one cent higher than it is currently. So that since 1999, it was 64 cents on the hundred. In 1999, it is 63 cents on the hundred as of currently today. So of course, the point out is that they are very conservative in their approach. We live within our veins. And while cost savings, as you have seen through grants and cost savings through energy performance or other cost saving cuts, that's the way they have been able to deliver the services at the same level. So the next budget meeting with the budget committee, of course, is on the September 7th, I mean, February 17th. This is, departments will be giving their budget request. And by March 12th, we'll be compiling all the department's expenditures. Of course, we will hold public hearings in May before it's approved, and everyone's welcome to attend. And we'll approve by law, by the code of Virginia, we have to approve it by June 30th. So we are looking at scheduling right now, no changes to approval of the budget at the June regular meeting on June 7th of 2020. Next is getting to the grants again. This is the Belfast Waterline Extension Project Phase 3 Notice. If anyone doesn't know, we also have a $928,000 grant from DHCD with the Russell County Public Service Authority to do Phase 2. Now this is to proceed with Phase 3. This is the notice by the Department of Housing and the Cumberland Plateau Planning District to begin our next grant application into Phase 3 into the Belfast area, within Ms. Di's area. So I need an approval to proceed with the public notice on the Phase 3, the Belfast Waterline Extension Project Phase 3 notice. So I got to combine that.
So moved.
Thank you, David, Steve. All in the favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Okay, next on the county administrator reports is, of course, the Dainte Sewer Line. This is another grant that we have win after, this one is for $2.5 billion from the Department of Housing and Community Development that's in Ms. Wallace's area. This was, has been endorsed by, you know, the ARC manager, program manager through the Virginia Department of Housing and Community Development. This is the Dainte Sewer Plant that's currently within the Dainte area. This project will take that one offline and move it into the Famas Saint Pile, which the county currently has a capacity agreement with. And not just from an environmental perspective, but from a grant perspective, this is 100% grant money. Ms. Wallace, do you want to elaborate on that?
I don't, but I've been waiting on this, I'm glad it's here.
Thank you, ma'am.
I will, I will, just a minute, if you all will allow me. The little tiny community of Sun, Virginia, has their own little package plant. And our very own Caitlin is here, and she's going to attest to that. But anyway, they have tirelessly waited for some help because they have to expend that and keep that little plant going. And so this is going to be able to take that community and put it into the trunk line. So we're, I'm just very proud of that and pleased with that. So thank you, board. I appreciate everybody that's helped me and worked on this.
Thank you, Ms. Wallace. As y'all can see up on the screen, I need a board approval for the application. And actually, it comes out with a total and all other of the funding is $2,799,750. I need approval for the application for the DHCD through Department of Housing for the Dainte Regional Sewer Line Extension Project.
I'll make that motion.
Next, Steve?
I'll say.
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
And again, next one, of course, again, is a request from the Sheriff's Department. And this is to change off the three cars. This is with a lease agreement, and this with, that is used in their investigations. And this also, as you can see, this will have a savings of $10,270.08 over the current lease. I need approval for these three bills.
So moved.
David, all right, do we have a second?
Second.
Carl? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Next on the county administrator request is, of course, a resolution. This is for the approval of the secondary highway six-year plan of 2019, '20 through 2025, '26, and the construction priority list. The board supervisors approved the six-year plan last month at the board. This is just the resolution endorsing what their approved plan was. There has been no changes to it. And again, this is just the resolution to confirm the January board's meeting on the secondary system construction program. Tim, do you have anything to elaborate?
No, I wish we could have added another project, but they wouldn't allow it. So at least nothing's coming off, so that's good.
Yes, it is. And that was a good point to make because if anyone had been in these meetings, the state, Virginia did cut their transportation budgets, and they did do a lot of trimming, yes, they did, especially not only in the construction, but as well as in the maintenance. Next on the county administrator.
Do you need a motion to approve?
Yes, thank you.
Do we have a motion to approve this?
So moved.
Tim? Do we have a second? Thank you, David. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Next is, on the county administrator request is for the MS job description changes. I need a approval for the job descriptions now that I'm diversity management director. Made these changes to the current job description. I need a motion.
I'll make that motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Last on the county administrator request is, I need a motion to set the salary of the deputy treasurer that was hired at $24,960. I need a motion for approval. I'll make it.
Thank you, David.
Second.
Second, Steve. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Madam Chair, that concludes the county administrator reports and requests. Thank you.
All right, next on our agenda is any matters presented by the Next on our agenda is any matters presented by the board. Tim, do you have anything?
No, ma'am.
David?
Yes, ma'am, I've just had a couple of things. I've talked to William Mail Counts. He is a Russell County native, raised his family here in Russell County. He is in Buchanan County tonight because they have the meetings the same night we do. So he is now the new director of the Landon District, VDOT, and he is really excited about working with us here in Russell County and trying to help us with a lot of, you know, the needs and stuff that we have, and it's good to have somebody like that. I know JR took a position in the Bristol District, and now the mail is here, and I'm sure Tim, that get up too. I've told him about you on the Highway Department, but that's, it's good to have him. I think he'll do a great job. Second thing is, I need an update, Lonzo, actually from VDOT, about the Miller Creek Veterans Memorial Bridge that was passed and accepted, and I have not had an update on it yet because I've got some veterans there on Miller Creek and other areas in Law Branch and some different areas that's contacted me. They would like, with COVID, it's a little hard, you know, as far as I've got the approval from the landowner, as far as the erection of the sign, and being able to put that in. So if you could give me an update on that, I'd be so grateful.
Yes, sir.
Also, I'd like to thank MLC and the Workforce Program. We all know in this county, we got a trash problem, and we know we got people bringing trash in from other counties. We know that. But I'm going to tell you something, these people were tirelessly to go back and have to pick this garbage up off the side of the road and then put it back in these cans, and it's a shame. I've got two dump sites right now in my district, and Lonzo knows about one of them, that something's going to have to be done. Either we're going to have to really take a hard look through the budget, this next budget year, about opening our trash sites longer, making them more, you know, feasible for the citizens of the county, and work something out with these other regional partners in these other counties. I'd rather take their trash and hadn't throw it over the hill. I mean, I don't know what the answer to that is. I wish I was bright enough to know, but I think there's got to be a mechanism in play that we could work together on a regional basis. If another county brings their garbage over here, let's partner with them and say, hey, I'd rather have it in the can than over the hill. And I've got two horrible, you know, Lonzo, you've seen the pictures on one of them, horrible sites, and I'm not, I could probably speak for the board here, that we're facing the same issues, going up the road to Belfast, on the side of the road, going down to Dainte or St. Paul or in Penance District, and ours as the large member in Tim's district. I wish people would have enough respect, as we've talked about having respect, have respect and love for our county, and please, please, if you see somebody throw out something out that window, call somebody. Call the law. I get so sick of my stomach at seeing all this, but I just want to vent over that because I went up there twice to tour this site, and it's horrible, and something's got to be done.
I'll just say that in regards to the internet service, we have three applications that are, have been submitted now, don't we, Lonzo?
Yep, we have, we have three applications that have been submitted. We had one in addition to all these other grants that we're submitting on our own counties too. That was approved in Tim's district. There's three others that's sitting within the broadband team in Bridgeville.
Waiting for the money. One of those is Clark's Valley, the other is Drill-
And Corn Valley.
And Corn Valley.
Yes, sir.
So if there are other areas that you want us to look at, get in touch with us. We'll know more after this meeting than Lou and I have on the eighteenth, where those holes are. You may be covered in one of these VITI, or one of these cap two areas, or in some of the other areas that we're planning to get into, but I want to, I want to try to get it to the, you know, that last mile out there because there's some, there's some areas that I'm sure that Point Broadband is going to consider it's not economically feasible for them to take it there. And I want, while this grant money is available, I want to dump out of those areas and try to go after it, put more applications in, you know, to some private providers, you know. If Point didn't want to do it, we'll find somebody, I go clear in other areas that will go after those areas. We just need an agreement with Point that they will guarantee to provide services off their line from that point on.
Steve, since you're on this, can I ask one question, please, for Lou and Steve? I appreciate what you guys are doing on that. Is there really going to be any more cell site money come available? I mean, I am desperate in Drill and Sword Creek, the area in between Buchanan County area region. I need a cell site back.
Well, that's all handled through the Cumberland Plateau Company and the VCC, Virginia Coalfield Coalition. Well, we've had a meeting sometime coming up here before too long.
Please, Lou, would y'all put a request in for me?
They're trying, yeah.
I'll come out there and help you, Ray.
I agree, it's about time that we got some stuff for Russell County, because they're concentrating down in Buchanan County. Try and set up a rock, like, put a cell tower down there, and they should actually sit too low. He's right underneath it, and he still can't get any internet service.
Well, I've got property owners, and I've got some people sitting in the audience that knows people that we can get a lot of site location easily.
Yeah.
It's really a danger because you get out through there, and it's so spotty, and there's gaps out there, like you just said earlier, with the no broadband. Do you don't have any cellphone service either? If so, and I've worked with all these other providers and stuff, trying to get them to build to that area, and they say, well, it's just not economical.
Let me ask you, if we have internet service into those areas, you can write off that.
Yes, yes.
So we need, we need a long-range plan to combine all that together and try to fill in all these gaps.
Y'all let me know, I'll help me do it.
Thank you. That's it.
Carl?
No, ma'am, here.
Lou?
Yes, ma'am, I do. Tonight, we heard from the audience about the PSA and the situation that we have with the PSA, and I have also had a call about a water disconnect and the cost that it entails to put it back up. And I do think it's appalling to have this particular situation, and I don't know what the answer is, but I want you to know that we heard you and that we have discussed this, and this is an ongoing situation that we're looking at. And I don't have an answer today, but I may by the next time we meet again. So I appreciate your coming and your letting us know how you feel and the situation that you find yourself in.
Thank you very much.
Next, let's see, what have I got? Also, I want to say thank you again for the sewer line that's going to take Dainte, Virginia all the way to St. Paul and clean up Lit Creek. I could not be more pleased. The partners involved in this are happy. And also, I have a little bit of information that, about some ATV trails. I think we are closer to seeing an expansion into Dainte, Virginia, and we are also working on our campground there. And we just received in January a hundred and two thousand dollars from a nonprofit in Charlottesville, Virginia, that heard our plight and decided they would help us. So we've added some more money to our campground project in Dainte, Virginia, and we're hoping that that's going to roll out some great tourism projects. So thank everybody for their support. That's all, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Ors?
Yes, I would like to start with saying that Jess Powers, with the emergency management department, I have spoken already, have donated almost a million dollars into the county this year with grants and things, through all these years, and I think that we're about to go in this direction.
Mr. Christian, I would just, I don't need to interrupt, but we don't want to talk too much about personnel because obviously, Mr. Powers has a right to his privacy. I just don't want us to do anything that would somehow violate-
Okay, I'll just try and give him credit for what he has done. Another thing, the man mentioned, Valley Water, I have had at least two come to my mind. One had to pay over a hundred dollars. He said he got tangled up somewhere between the bank and PSA, and I told the man that I talked to, one of the main men, I'm not talking who it is, I said, if you don't watch, you're going to end up with egg on your face, and we don't want that. It don't look good for the county, it don't look good for the board, so we're going to have to try to, whatever the situation is, whatever the solution is, we got to try to get this better under control.
Can I make a comment? That check I've received, that bill from the PSA on the twentieth day of, I'm sorry, the eighteenth day of December, it was on a Friday. I mailed it on the twentieth day of December. They cut my water off on the sixth day of December. I've got receipts, I'll show you where they mailed it. It doesn't show where it's a post date or anything on it, and I know in the state of Virginia, and a lady can tell you, a post date is recognized at the court of law, because I manage state farm insurance company in Northern Virginia. Number two, when I mailed it in-
Mr. King, I apologize. We limit our citizens' comment to that one time, and so to be fair to all citizens, and I'm sure you're aware of that, that we-
I'm sorry.
That we limit it to that time.
Well, I will, it's my turn to speak, and I have my matters, and I can sympathize with him, and this is what happened to me. My brother and myself, our yards are connected. I got my water bill the Wednesday, the week before, the whole next week around to the next Monday, he gets his water bill. We have the same mail carrier, our mailboxes are two numbers apart, and please tell me how that happens. And I apologize to Mr. King because that is bad. He's been here all these years, and why would his water be cut off? It's really an unjust thing to some of our senior citizens. Don't go to the mailbox every day, don't go to the post office every day, but what's to say? It's not their fault, the mail is behind, and we need to apologize. And I did ask, and I will give you all a phone number, that I called and I asked, and they assured me that my next bill, when it is printed, I will get a text and I will get an email, and my email will have a copy of my statement. So if you want to correct it, here's the number, nine-nine-one-zero-two-zero-zero. And that's Ms. Rhonda Lester. She was very cordial, very polite. She told me that the problem, the program that we have now that we've bought, or they have bought, because the PSA is their own authority, if you give them that information, they will send out to you a notification when that bill is being printed. We know the mails want to be slow, but I'm hoping that I will get my notification this month that my bill has been printed and being sent to me. And maybe if we start calling and they start putting that in their program, it will allow us to have better communication with them. Second thing I want to tell is, I've had calls from several of my folks about getting internet and broadband, TV and internet, whatever they need, which we all need. Society has changed. We have doctor's appointments, we order our medicine, we shop, our kids are home at school, everybody needs internet and fast. I did find out, they asked me, was it going to be just cable, or is it going to be fiber? It is going to be fiber. All of these grants, all these applications that have been sent, there's not a one on this board that didn't vote for those three applications to be sent and improved for our citizens. I agree with Steve, we need to fill in the gaps. Not everybody's going to get it. They say I have excellent service. I do not. I do not have internet. It's awful. I have to go to the west end of the house, on the carport, lane sideways, and raise my phone up to get any service or it's cut off. It's terrible, and there's lots of folks that are right with me. So if we know there's a gap or it's not good, please contact us, and we will work. Steve's on that committee, Lou's on that committee. We will try to fill in these spots that you all need service. We want you to have it, and we'll work with you to get it. Broadband is going to do, Point Broadband's going to do a lot, but like Steve said, we will work with other funds to try to fill in the rest of those gaps for you all. All right, I will hush. All right, at this time, I will take a motion for, to set our next meeting, March the first, and I will have a motion to adjourn. Anybody?
Some move, Madam Chair.
David, do we have a second? Ors? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
March the first.